Our Father, we trust you have it. Dear Lord God, we continuously thank you for your mercy and your grace, dear Lord God, that you've bestowed and extended towards the citizens of Dillon. Dear Lord God, we ask you to continue to bless our mayor, our city council, our city manager, all the department heads of the city of Dillon, as we gather here on today to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything we do, we pray we be kept to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, what is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Welcome everybody here this evening, especially our special guest in the audience. I think we've had such a vocal pledge since I've been here. It's good to hear this.
Young boys should say that.
To have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm gonna move.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aha. Pose. Motion approved immediately from February 8th, wherever scheduled meeting.
No motion.
Go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Pose. Let me start here. What I'd like to do with the Girl Scouts, and I've told them they could stay if they want to learn about a council meeting, how it functions, but I got a proclamation I'd like to read as Girl Scout month. I think it's March 12th marks the 104th anniversary of the Girl Scouts. So I'm gonna read the proclamation up here, but I'd like the Girl Scouts to come right in front of me, and that way the camera will be on you while I read it. And the whole city of Dillon and Marion's, around the areas, and those in the Girl Scouts. Now, this'll be on local TV, eight TV, and you'll also see your picture in the Dillon Herald, is that right, Betsy?
And on your Facebook.
You don't know how you look, you'd be too much to... Get up there. Come on. Alright. Proclamation, Girl Scout Week 2016. Whereas March 12th, 2016 marks the 104th anniversary of Girl Scouts in the USA, family by Juliette Gordon Lowe in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. Whereas throughout its esteemed history, Girl Scouts has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, character, and whereas girls discover, connect, and take action to make their local communities and the world a better place. And whereas more than 3.2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 104 years of this American tradition, 59 million women who are former Girl Scouts have living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now, before I, Todd Davis, my virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Dillon, do hereby applaud and commit the Girl Scouting as made to America's girls, and proudly proclaim the week of March 6th, March 12th, 2016, as Girl Scout Week, signed today. Congratulations on the way. And if y'all will turn and space, mention your name for us.
Brooke Briggel.
Nicole.
Amy.
Ally.
Alyssa.
Nadia.
Cindy. Cindy, you're in the lecture, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It was a pleasure having y'all. Y'all are more than welcome to stay as long as you like. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Give him that proclamation. Okay. I kinda got one subject tonight, it's kinda long, I'm gonna hand these out to you. Y'all remember we talked about a feasibility study for motel, hotel, or different. We asked them to do it promptly, which they did. I got an email back from Glenn, Maggie last week went over it. It's kinda mixed in the result. I'll give you the highlights while y'all scanning through that, it's about 20 pages. Some of the points were, and I'm not gonna definitely read all of this, but it says, "The inventory of better quality motel rooms closest to Dillon are in parks, obviously, off I-95 and I-20 across the Magnolia Mall." We have used that set of motels to benchmark the subject's projections, which is Dillon. And, you know, this is not a comparable lodging market, Dillon is one of the best markets they had to compare. They also looked at the Holiday Inn Express I-95, about 10 miles north of Florence, at the industrial park. Actually, that was the best performing motel of the mall. Best western in Lata, Days Inn Quality Inn in Dillon. Says, "The city of Florence generates hotel room demand for various corporate leisure demand generators, such as Florence Civic Center, Francis Mary University, and Cloud Medical Systems, Otis Industries, Honda QVC, and distribution centers." So there's a base corporate demand in market during the midweek throughout the year. Says Florence, this is why I mentioned Florence, because we're competing against on a motel from what they say. Glenn, you chime in whenever you want. Says Florence benefits from numerous amenities such as sit-down restrooms, bars, shopping facilities, areas, entertainment venues. In addition, Florence has two interstate, I-29 and I-95, and a midway point between New York and Miami. The city of Dillon will generate hotel room demand primarily from corporate guest visits during the week, which doesn't surprise me, and transit demand from travelers on I-95, which didn't. That there is corporate demand currently seeking accommodations in the Dillon market, but they're captured by hotels in Florence due to the product offering in the Florence area. Thereby services and amenities make Florence a more appealing option to those traveling on I-95. I don't think that was a surprise at all. We kinda knew that going in. Some of the other things in the feasibility study that I noticed, right now's the best time in the last decade for developers to build motels. Didn't know that, but right now's the best time. Why? I do not know. I don't know why. I know daily occupancy rates have gone up in the last, what, five years from what I read. In 2014, there's been a 4.5% increase in the average daily rate, if that's why. 65.6% of the annual occupancy rate was in 2016. So that means an average 65.6% of the rooms, I guess, are occupied last year in motel. That Holiday Inn Express at that industrial park outside of Florence had between 75% to 80% occupancy rate, with an average daily rate, or room rate, between $105 and $110 per night. The hotel rates across from the Magnolia Mall in Florence are more suitable what Dillon's get, between $60 and $65 a night. I thought they would've gotten more, but they're on par with what Dillon's getting here. They did say in 2016 Dillon's occupancy rate would be 60%, which is on par with those motels off I-20 and I-95 in Florence. They had 61%. Again, that Holiday Inn Express 10 miles north is between 75% and 80%. Benchmark communities. It says, "During the course of our analysis, we have looked at several destinations in South Carolina that have similar populations and economic characteristics such as Dillon." One of those was in Newberry. Although Newberry, they have a, yeah, they got a college, of course, the Opera House, they have a, I wanna say it's, I can't remember which motel it was, but Hampton Inn, that they opened there about six years ago. Their occupancy levels there range from 55% to 60%, and the average daily rate ranging that motel is from 89% to 100%. Says Dillon would definitely generate more transient guests than Newberry, however, Newberry has a higher corporate demand presently than Dillon does. Says these operating results are considered to be still substantially below the system, well, system-wide average for Hampton Inns, and may not support current construction and development costs. What else I found's kinda interesting is that Lake City also opened up a 57-room inn at the crossroads called Boutique Hotel. They're getting published rates between 109 and 139 in the low season, and they're getting 129 and 159 in the high summer season. I have no idea how.
Is it their own city?
I don't know. That hotel reportedly cost $6 million to develop, or nearly $100,000 per key. On conclusions, based on the foregoing analysis, PKF, PKF is a, they're under the umbrella of the CDRU Group, and they're trading on the New York Stock Exchange, they're a $9 billion company, this is what they do, consulting services with their bills, leisure industry, all that stuff, so they know what they're doing. But it went on to say, "Based on our foregoing analysis, we have come to the following conclusions regarding the potential market, financial support, or the proposed hotel in the city of Dillon. Our analysis of the hotel market indicates that as a result of the lack of a commercial business, of a lack of a base commercial business year-round in the market, the subject's year-round occupancy is unlikely to surpass 61%. Our analysis of the potential income stream generated by the proposed hotel in a stabilized year of operations is about $410,000 annually, after a management fee and reserve for placement are deducted before debt service." They go on to talk about how much it costs to build a motel. This would be approximately $7.5 to $8 million for a 75-room hotel, which is, they're gonna build one, they're gonna want that many rooms in. Based on our analysis, the current value estimate of the proposed hotel, an opening is estimated between $65,000 to $75,000 per key. This would be a feasible project if the land was donated. The land would be donated by a public or private entity, could reduce the cost of development by 10 to 15% of total costs, which is $700,000 to $1,400,000. Or property taxes, real and personal property taxes to vote to city and county would result in a tax savings of $50,000, and they represented a year, this could equate to an increase of approximately $550,000, giving a 9% capitalization rate. Or incremental increases in sales or visitor taxes during the initial years of operation, first three to five years, in parentheses. This would allow the property to generate additional net operating income prior to stabilization. This could result in additional cash flow to narrow the gap. I assume that would be hotel taxes.
But the only thing about that is, they're paying it, but the consumer is actually paying that.
Yeah, yeah. Given the potential income stream analyzed...
It's not paid if it's not you.
That is correct, yeah. Given the potential income stream analyzed and estimated cost of building and operating such a facility, it does not appear that the project is feasible at this time without significant inducements from the private or public sector. As additional commercial demand generators come into the market, which that very well could be in Dillon, there could be additional support for a hotel to be developed. Y'all can read the further report. They did interview representatives at Wyman Gordon, Harbor Freight, Purdue Farms, local governments, and... About four to five acreage. We're right there with the same rate that those motels are getting in for us. But those rates of Florence, if you read your report, have gone down in the last few I wish I knew what the one in Lata was, that it might've said. We're gonna hang on to it, and, you know, things can change in a hurry with, you know, another Wyman Gordon kickoff, suppliers and them become plant in Dillon. It's a start, but that's where we are.
Be nice to...
We're gonna still...
Have an idea where that site would be.
We're gonna still send this out to the developers. Just proof that Florence, Maggie, Glenn, and I have talked today and other, I can't remember what names, was discussed, but we're gonna still get it to, maybe they'll see it for different... Like I say, it was kind of a mixed report. I was hoping if the guests, we have a dire need for one, Dillon will be there tomorrow.
It's like getting on the...
Oh, yeah. At least it's very distinct. Glenn, I don't have anything else I'm gonna...
I'll give out just a mention and...
Wait, one more clock. Kurt, can you call him with the damn clock?
No, sir.
Well, the time changed on him. I noticed this morning it's about right, and then I went 30 minutes later, it's about 20 minutes behind, so it moved sometime...
Well, it automatically resets when you have daylight seconds. Uh, okay. Automatically adjusts itself.
Well, call him again, what are you gonna tell him? Get back to you.
So you want me to call him?
Yeah, I want you to call, you got his number now, and that way he can kinda schedule this time of the year, and we can go ahead and do what we need to do. It's in-house.
Yes, sir. Last month I brought up, and after the meeting, I made some phone calls to find out that me and Betsy didn't know what we were talking about on Dillon County taxes. And you may have seen in the newspaper here in the last week or two where Dillon County has actually voted twice to offer prepayment of property taxes. Prior to that, we were told it was gonna be post, but they came to find out that couldn't happen, and Betsy and I talked, so they, doing the prepayment, which doesn't bother us one way or another. We wouldn't get our money any sooner, but it wouldn't be any later. It'd be just like you would do if you have a mortgage, you're paying an escrow. You'd just be paying that escrow to an accountant. So just wanted to clarify that, and we have no issues in the prepayment. Direct deposit, you folks voted last month to begin or implement direct deposit with our employees in July. We're having a lunch and learn in April, on April the 6th, for our employees to discuss direct deposit, how it will affect them if they do not bank at First Citizens Bank, if they bank somewhere else. First Citizen will be there walking through this and answering questions that they may have. Our annual health fair for our city employees were held last week, had no good turnout, about 75% of our employees who are on our health insurance are part of that. Something that a lot of them look forward to. And then we have some that they don't look forward to, but they still go and do it, so it is a good thing, I think it has helped us over the years that we did this, to give people an idea, educates them about cholesterol and things of that nature. So it's a good program. Even better news, Dr. Wallace has been here a long time, along with Janet and myself and Jack. SRF loan is paid off. We made our last annual payment, or last monthly payment in February. That was a 20-year note that the city in Purdue had for about $13 million for the wastewater treatment expansion. That is no longer on our books. So in the coming year, we will have roughly $230,000 savings in our budget due to that loan being off our books. Don't get too excited, because starting in July, we have a new SRF loan, and that is the loan that we took out for roughly half a million dollars to relocate the wastewater line on Highway 301 across the bridge. That's an annual payment of $45,000, and that's a whole lot cheaper than $265,000 that we had budgeted this year that we in right now. So that takes place or begins on July 1st of this year. Police Department hosted a community meeting in February, just to give the community opportunity to come in to see, one, how the police department works, two, to discuss some of the property crimes we've had in particular neighborhoods and throughout our city. Lasted about an hour, hour and a half, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Brady and Mr. Eller was in attendance. Had about 20 people there, and had some good questions. Betsy, I think did a good article, wanted to follow up on it. It's something that we're looking to do two to three times a year. Just, once again, if, don't have a lot going on, just so people can see the face of the police department, get to know who these folks are, and actually how things work. We had a lot of questions asked that concerned bonds, and I think we answered some questions in that. Police Department doesn't do anything with bonds, we don't, or they don't set the bonds, and they don't let people out of jail when they meet their bonds. So I think that opened up some eyes to understand to some point how the process works in the police department. Last month, we, I presented to you folks two bids to be some work done with wastewater plant, one to Orbital Basin, and then the upgrades at the lift stations at Purdue and Commerce Drive. Both of those grants have been, both of those projects have been awarded to the contractors, and one of them started last week, Hardee?
Yes, sir.
What about the lift stations?
I have heard from where they're...
They have roughly 90 to 100 days to get those jobs completed, so hopefully by the end of June, both of those projects will be done.
What's total cost of that?
The Orbital Basin wastewater treatment plant, $500,000. The two lift station projects, about the same, wasn't it, Hardee?
Yes, real money.
Yeah, about $400,000, which we have a grant for that. About $400,000 on that.
So it'll take $500,000 depreciation?
For the Orbital Basin?
Yeah.
It'll come out of our budget or out of depreciation. At the end of the day, when Smith does his audit, it'll come out of depreciation.
Yeah, we need to look at that depreciation fund as a bank, and we borrow it from the bank, and we ought to have a projected time period where we replace that money. We've made that mistake, you know, we passed, and we spent $800,000 on that CCO, but we need to repay the bank. We need to, we need to figure out how we're gonna do that. We're just a bank.
The only way, the only way you could, I guess we could do it is, you know, we wanna keep the depreciation that we had in place with Purdue. But also, if we use X number of dollars in a particular year, the next year, I guess we budget.
What you do is this, I mean, you're not gonna have to replace that basin...
No.
...again for 30 years. I mean, you don't wanna amateurize it over that period of time, but you amateurize the loan just like you would with the bank. We borrow $500,000 from it, what is a reasonable time period that we pay that $500,000 back? That's how we do it, and then we work that into the budget, and that comes out of operation maintenance and repair. But we backed up, you know, we can, we had the hit with the CCO, and now these projects that we're doing. And if you look at the budget for the last three years, we do operate within a $150,000, $200,000 loss, or just run deep. And I can't remember the last time we had a profit.
It's been about three or four years now. Now, the Orbital Basin, that wouldn't be, if we, that would be a depreciation, but it wouldn't be a depreciation that I think that Purdue would be tied into. Because the Orbital Basin would be something that all users are part of.
All users included, Purdue. What I'm saying is, is that it's the total, it's total operation maintenance and repair on the whole system.
That is correct.
And that's how you figure it in. If you're borrowing some money to make that system work, then amateurize that over 10 years, you get your money back, and that way it doesn't have such an impact. If you try to do it in two or three years, I mean, I agree with them, I mean, that hurts. And you see that going up. Now, we've seen it go down too, but that wide fluctuation, I mean, it's hard for them to make a budget when they don't know how that's gonna come in.
And that may be, as you and I talked earlier, is, as the auditor and I spoke last week on this, was, come up with a percentage every year from a rate standpoint for Purdue. Right now, it's 15% less than what other outside users pay. It's, just come up with, they pay 15%, whatever the rate is for other outside users, have a 15% discount, or whatever magic number it may be. That way each year, the only time their rate would change is if the overall rate changes.
When was the last time we had a rate change? In 2010?
Five years ago. And that was pretty much a base rate. Now, Mike Hannah, who's scheduled to be here tonight, he will be here actually in April to give you a new rate study, and if it's something that you wanna go forward with, that'll be something we implement in July.
We had this discussion before, and we changed it in 2010, and we had to go up, what, 10% or something like that, maybe 6%? But everybody said, "Oh, we're having this huge rate." If you do it and book it CPI every year...
And that's what he's...
Then we won't get behind it.
That's what we're gonna do. He's gonna present that in April. He gave us a little draft when we sent down...
We gotta catch up.
In February, it would be, CPI is one of its costs, that will be a part of it, and he's also doing it based on other municipalities throughout the state to see where we are as far as rates. And right now, we're at the bottom end of the spectrum. But then again, as I told him, and we've talked about this before, sometimes those are not apples to apples in each community, everybody's different, as far as users and how old the system is, and number of customers, things of that nature. But he'll be here next month to present that, and hopefully we'll accept it, pass it, and it'll be a part of our budget come July, and then next year, he'll be back again in February, March with another study. It may not change, or it may change, depending on what's going on in our community. But always include a CPI increase, whether we do anything else, just as we've done on sanitation the last two or three years.
He did a good job on benchmarking the rates, and all of the things of what's been going on. It's just that...
Two percent. Yeah, we did, Janet's, we did a 2% increase last year in order to, on rates.
On rates, yeah.
We used just the CPI log in last year.
Well, that's what we need to, we need to do that, but now we're behind though. And we need to, we need to get a rate that figures, you know, there's, part of that rate needs, we need to know what our depreciation needs to be, and a acceptable time period that we get there and pay ourselves back.
And that's what we'd have to do, is each year, whatever we use, or whatever...
You gotta pay that money back.
The auditor comes up with the...
If you don't, you're working your way right back to where we were 20 years ago. We don't wanna go there.
Right now, we have, what, $2 million in depreciation? Is that correct?
Restricted.
Both restricted and unrestricted.
Restricted.
That's just what we're into.
2.6.
2.6. 2.6 million. We probably oughta be at the $5 million mark, but I want him, I want Smith to tell us, or... I've tried to get Smith, Smith won't give us a number.
Well, what about Hannah?
He can give a suggestion, and I think he's gonna have that in that rate study, 'cause what he, if I remember correctly, and Mayor, tell me if I'm wrong, Janet, you might remember, it was, it was a high number from a depreciation standpoint, which, yeah, which it would drive up your rate, and, but I told him, let's present it, and that'll be left to y'all to decide.
We won't say a minimum.
Well, it just how, you know, you just amateurize it, I mean, just make it like you pay back SRF, you, you know, if it takes 10 years to get there, at least we're moving in that right direction, and in the interim, anytime we use it, you know, use money out of that, we replace it. Agree.
Yeah. But going back to the, you know, under the agreement we have with Purdue for the previous 20 years, the restricted depreciation money was only, can be used on anything...
SRF-related depreciation.
Covered on that line. Yes, or anything that deals strictly with Purdue. If we had a sewer line that gave us a big issue on this side of town, we couldn't use that money 'cause Purdue wasn't part of that. And that's what I'm saying about the Orbital Basin, I mean, you know, one of the things Purdue wants to do if we continue to depreciate with them is to have a say whether or not how we use that money. I don't know that they would agree to, well, the plants, everybody's not dealing with just us, and that's the point I was making earlier. That plant, we have portions of that, the actual Orbital Basin, what, built in 1965, Hardee?
62.
62. So, yeah, we got that 53-years-old, 52-year-old portion there.
What was the cost, did he say Commerce, the lift station at Commerce?
Lift station at Commerce and the lift station at Purdue, do the upgrades there to help get rid of the smell, to help get rid of the corrosion, right at a half a million. to help get rid of the smell, to help get rid of the corrosion, right at a half a million.
The, um, the upgrade, but that's gonna be an ongoing cost, right?
There's gonna be an ongoing maintenance cost of, of, um, what do we think, lime?
Lime.
At the Purdue plant?
Thousand dollars.
About a hundred thousand a year, yeah.
I just can't see how that's a good idea.
He, he didn't like my idea of running that thing out in the swamp, over there next to Jack's house. Well, if, if, nah, we didn't do that, never mind, I was gonna say something about that. Um, let me go back and look real quick what that cost was for the-
To move it.
Four hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars to do-
To move it?
No, 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 it'd be more than that to move it.
Yeah, you gotta move it out of the lot.
And of that four hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred fifty's coming from a grant. Four hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars to upgrade the Purdue lift station at their plant and Commerce Drive lift station. Three hundred fifty thousand to get it through a grant.
That's good. That's true. What's the time we were thinking that was up?
All on us and Purdue at half a million or more.
Yeah, so we'll be spending about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total.
Total?
In what?
Orbital. No, in total, both projects, about millions.
Well, no, but how much is it gonna cost us?
Well, you subtract that three fifty out of it.
That's not including the pipe one?
No.
So we're spending one point five million?
Yes, of those three projects, that is correct, which ones alone, second one's about seventy, seventy-five percent grant, and the third one, just one hundred percent our cost. The last thing I have is, is another grant. We applied today's submitted paperwork, uh, for the pre-application for CBDG money, which is roughly, was it seven hundred and fifty-land, uh, to go towards the construction of the Mortage Tank Highway Thirty-four. With that, if we get this, we have been told, we're guaranteed, guaranteed, Hardee, am I correct? It's on another SRF loan at no interest and no payment back. I mean, it's just a half a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand for it.
So it's matching seven fifty, and it matches, it matches.
And we're also capable, if we needed and we didn't get the CBDG grant, an additional seven hundred and fifty at one percent. No, it's principal forget, I mean, interest forgiven. All we do is pay the principal back if we need it.
It's a loan that you don't have to pay back? I thought that was a grant.
Well, it's calling loan through the SRF. If it would be based on SRF, we would pay them back just the principal.
Is it, I mean, this is how it is?
Uh, that's, you didn't say that.
Yeah, I thought you said it too.
Well, one CBDG grant-
Right.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand we're applying for. Another one is through SRF, seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is free money, we don't pay anything back.
They're giving us that money?
They're giving us seven hundred and fifty.
How many municipalities are trying to get their free money there?
Everybody probably will try. And then additional seven hundred and fifty at principal only, yeah. No, no, at principal only, yeah.
So we can get, and it's about twenty-one, two point-
Well, about a million and five is what they're looking at there. But in that, that would, we could go with the SRF, seven hundred and fifty, just paying the principal back if we didn't get the CBDG money. That is our goal, and then last year, we applied for CBDG for this project and, and was denied, but we submitted again. I think, is it September when they do that? Is when they come back with, whether we get it?
Do you have an idea who wants to meet us to try to get it?
Uh, no.
You won't ever know.
No, not at all. And then once we complete the upgrades at Purdue and Commerce Drive through the Rural Infrastructure Fund, uh, which we got three hundred and fifty for that when it first came out two years ago, we will apply again for additional half a million to do some other rehabs and different pump stations that we have, uh, which, very little paperwork to do for that grant. I think our match is ten percent, very simple. This past year, we weren't able to find, we hadn't finished ours, but they gave all the money to the upstate and gave, I think the lowest was about a million dollars they gave away to the two entities, so. The money's right now, it's there to do these kind of things. We're battling hard to, to get those funds. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, citizens reported, seeing anybody wanna bring their kitchen? I'll body. Yeah. Uh, we finished business, have to do all these by, gotta do them all?
Uh, yeah, again, the second reading, you need to do them separately.
Order sixteen oh two, annex Ellis Jones' property at twelve twelve, I'll let you get it down, yes. May twenty, second of all favor. I oppose. Order sixteen three, annex Shanika Jones' property of thirteen sixteen, I'll let you get it, yes. Second of all favor, I oppose. Order sixteen four, annex Shanika Jones' property at thirteen twelve, highway thirty-four, yes. Have motion. Second of all favor, I oppose. Order sixteen oh five, annex Ollie L, L, L-
L who?
L who, not L who. Property at nine fourteen, highway three oh one south. I oppose, all favor, I oppose. And last, order sixteen six, annex Ollie, who, L who, property at nine eighteen, highway three oh one south. Second of all favor, I oppose. Uh, new business, order sixteen oh seven, a men zoning map property owned by McLeod Health. Then order sixteen oh eight, a men zoning map property owned by McLeod Health. I got second, all of favor. All of favor? Anybody oppose?
Yeah, but this is not a very active land. Which one?
That area will be-
Yeah, that's an old tax map, no? Yeah, that's a tax map. Yeah, those houses are still there on the map, aren't they?
Council member reports, uh, well, yes, uh, I wanted to ask, um, I read this in the Dillon Herald, and I wanted to try to get an understanding on the accommodation tax fund, that, uh, and I read here that Dillon County celebrates Main Street, is that, are they giving us eighty-four or not?
They don't give it to us, they give it to Chamber Commerce, that's correct. We don't get money from the county, yeah.
Cause we, we got our budget being filed, I suppose.
Yeah, we don't.
How about the handicaps, when you were talking about?
Still waiting to get something, one frame we have, what they got now won't fit that frame, so we're trying to find something that will retrofit, but that's about twenty year old piece of equipment.
Right.
Instead of having to buy a whole new unit, I gotta tell you, about two grand, twenty-five hundred dollars, so trying to find something that will go there. And that was for a wheelchair.
Right.
Yes.
All right, um, the ordinance we passed about the water cut off, when is all that gonna start to happen?
May first.
May first?
Yeah.
That's when those thirty-five dollar late cars would go on, on May first.
Um, Chief Rogers, glad to see you back.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I would like to see if you would address the ninth, I have a new problem that's starting to-
All right.
...happen again.
All right.
If you would look at that, and I appreciate it.
I will.
To that South Nine?
Yeah.
Um, I think that's all I've got, Mayor.
Just wanted to say thank you to the police department. They did an excellent job that night with the citizens and represented themselves very well, and I was so impressed with the questions that were asked that night by the citizens and the expressions of concern about what they saw happening in the neighborhood. And I think the biggest thing that I saw that people took away from this was not, was that they should not be hesitant to call nine one one if they see something that doesn't look right. And so many of them expressed the fear that they were bothering the police department or, or causing unnecessary problems, or even that they would get involved with a problem if they reported something that they saw that didn't look right in their, their neighborhood. And I thought everyone from top to bottom in the police department did a great job, the officers on the street, investigators, everybody did a good job of assuring those that were there that if you see something that doesn't look right, call. It doesn't matter, call, it's better to be safe than sorry. And, um, I think that'll help stop a lot of these problems that we're seeing happen around town. There was a lot of really good input and interaction between the department and the citizens there that night. I encourage you all to keep doing that on the regular basis, I think that'll be good. That's all I have.
We, we have to check, we, we talked about those, when they're putting the pipe down on there?
Level of having it?
Yeah.
Yeah, as soon as Bert gets free to do some things, we, we, he and I talked this afternoon about that one.
Okay, so that, the, the, the people putting the pipe down there?
Yeah, that won't just go down.
Okay, that's all.
Bring up one other thing, I didn't do it in the mayor's report through the time. We're right in the middle of meeting with the theater people, with Glenn and I, Maggie, we would've been in Field today, actually, to there, theater. I'm excited about the theater, even when I don't go, I see it, the marquee lit up, I does my heart good to see.
Make sure you, you're talking about, so everybody understands what theater you're talking about.
On the car, the old theater. There's an effort, a collaborative effort to bring that theater back up, even though it's, it is a gym in our community. I walked in there today, I've never been upstairs and looked at the production equipment and so forth. But if you ever, if that gets to a point where it gets too much to go in and rehab, there's some work that needs to be done, I don't know, we need to figure out what the dollar amount is, and figure out a way to do it. Uh, cause if you don't, you will lose a piece of your heart here in this town. That, that theater holds so much promise, and there's an effort now to kickstart the theater with kids, summer productions, there's a group that wants to start live productions again, some in the past, and some of the things in the theater you like, some of them you want, but it's great to know it's there if you wanna go and you wanna see some. Uh, so we're gonna bring that back to you, and I'm telling Glenn, the county involved with it, should have a statement this, um, we'll see what the theater board wants to do, there's a push for all the movies there now and stuff, but you gotta have the equipment to do that. Um, it's just a great, great part of Dillon's history, and there's more up there that you don't know. Problem is, when somebody wants to put on a production, John, you've been working on that when you invited up here, I think it'll cost them fifteen hundred, better minimum, or eighteen, poofed out, they'd even do some.
Just the cost of the electricity and heating and cooling that building, but rehearsals and then the performances is incredible, just electricity costs. I'm so glad you're bringing that back up because that's something we put a lot of money and effort into, and I hope lead the effort to try to get that theater revised and, and updated into performing arts facilities. It is a cultural gym that we have that very few towns our size have anything equivalent to. I'm glad to hear that there's an effort to make sure it's being used again, we really need that here, it's, that's a quality of life thing that'll be good for the community. There are things that, like you said, there are things that some people like and others want, um, but whatever happens in there, anything that happens in there will be good.
Bennett's Field just had Clint Black, stopped in Bennett's Field, um, and we're all looking for stuff like that, but-
You look at the Newberry Opera House, they have something in that facility three or four nights a week, and Newberry's not that much bigger than Dillon.
Well, it's Dillon-
But they have made a cultural center out of that old opera house, and it's not a whole lot bigger and nicer than what we have. There's the potential here in the PD to do that same kind of thing.
In Bennett's Field, they told me they had a hundred and thirty-eight events planned performances this, this, yeah. Gee, I mean, all kinds, I mean, that's-
Well, that leaves them from, yeah. High schools, homecoming, queen or something like that, recognition, dance recitals, I mean, it's community oriented.
Theirs is old, it's much larger, so it's nice, but I told Glenn coming back, even though that one's much larger and do more from a production standpoint, I like our situation as, as good or better, because more manageable of what we can do. Uh, the last thing, and I've had some calls on this, they didn't call me, so I guess I leave that to them. There's been two, two new public housing units going up, I think one on the Old Marion Highway?
One on Old Marion Highway, which is what, four houses?
Yes.
Four single-family dwellings and then an apartment complex by the stadium.
Apartment complex on West Main, across from the baseball stadium?
Yeah.
Is sixty-plus or some water?
I don't remember the number of units you said.
Thirty-five minutes.
Thirty-five units there. And the one on Old Marion, is that around, is that close to that curve or about toward?
In between Edgewood and the church.
Okay, all right.
And which will be four single-family dwellings there, houses.
All right.
Apartments, yes, houses.
That's all I have.
I'm good. Uh, one thing I've got, Benny, uh, I need to replace somewhere on the door, on the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Ernest Hardwick passed away.
Yes, sir.
And I was in, off the confidence the other week, and he brought up that they had a meeting in a couple, in six months, eight months, and when they, that's when it, he realized that Ernest had passed away and needed, you know, he brought it up to me, that it was my person, and, uh, and I talked with him, and I'm trying to think our area, but I'd like to replace him with Mike Hayes, uh, Mike lives in my district, and he's familiar with, he's, uh, had contracting license before, so I think he would be in and author, recommended him also.
Okay.
So, uh, and anybody else up there that, I mean, I mean, from time to time, I mean, maybe if you know someone's missing meetings, 'cause we have no way of knowing if people are attending meetings if they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Board of Appeals, they had a meeting.
Right, they all had a meeting.
Yeah, all the taxes coming, they, you know, you got your tax, dead at times.
And are all of them working good right now?
All of them, mission's working, and people showing up.
Yeah, we're all just gonna be, yeah. Anyway, I brought up the name Mike Hayes, so, uh, everybody, I think, do we have to vote on that, Glenn?
Yes, yes, yes.
Y'all make Mike Hayes motion. I make my motion to replace Ernest Hardwick with Mike Hayes, I said.
All of favor?
I oppose.
I'm making the assumption you talked to him.
Yeah, yeah, I did talk to him, and I'll get, I'll get his, his phone number to you and stuff. Anything else? No, that's all.
Um, the house, Mr. Maggie, that burned on Eighth Avenue, that's in the historical, Mr. Correct?
Main, uh-
Main.
Uh, across from the church, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what are we doing about trying to get that house, I mean, you got to tear it down?
Yes, sir, it's going through the demolition procedures. As a matter of fact, we, um, they just, Jack, the paperwork, um, pretty much they have it advertised, they have to advertise it three weeks in Dillon Herald, and, um, after the three-week advertisement, they will be able to give the paperwork to Bert for demolition.
Okay, sort of being on about the same timeframe as Dillon, or after the burn?
Yes, sir.
I will tell you all, we are going to utilize the theater at Celebrate Main. I've got a pork chop production crew that's coming in, it's two people, and they're gonna do, um, for children, they're gonna be Bremington players. It'll just be a forty-five minute show at three o'clock in the afternoon.
And the fact that the lady at Bennett's Field that was, said they have them, and they work in town.
Yeah, they are, mhm. Did you have them more than just kind of?
Is there other different events we gonna do this year besides that with Maggie?
I'm sorry, go.
Are we gonna do other different new events to the theater?
Yeah, that's something we're gonna sit down and work on.
I'm talking about the celebration on Main, is there any other new things you got in stores, or basically everything's gonna stay the same besides that?
Well, the, some of the vendors will change, and some of the, um, things like the blow-up houses, that sort of thing will change, because they're just now putting in what they wanna do.
Okay.
Well, yes, we do, I'm sorry, I'm not directly involved in this, we are having a five K McLeod run, helping with this part, we're having a mile run walk, it's gonna start from the wellness center and go all over, there's a route that we can post. Then we also have a tot ride around the wellness center on the track for little kids, and helmets are required, and then she's got a twenty-five mile bike ride. So we've got a lot of things going on in the early times, and then when they get back, they'll be there for the festival. So this is the- So, this is McLeod doing this and, help me with this, it's a three-part run. One at McLeod in Florence, one at Loris, and then ours is the last one. And you get medals that fit together.
Shirts, too.
Shirts, yes.
And they got a, uh.
Five K each one?
Yes.
Five K, five, once a five K, there's a one-mile walk. And then there's a, I don't know how far it is, there's one for the dogs.
Yeah, it's, uh, that'll be the.
I think somebody's. Period dog.
All right, if there's nothing else for good, council, I'm gonna make the motion when you turn.